Okay. Greg, can you hear us?
Yeah, we can. I don't know why my video feed didn't come through for some reason. Let me see here. Hmm. There we go.
There you are. Okay, well, a couple more minutes and we'll be good.
This is as quiet as I've been all day, folks.
All right, I have 6:30. Mr. Grummer, are we ready to begin?
Yes, sir, I believe we are.
All right, I will call to order the July 23 meeting of the Mall Mill Planning Commission. Mr. Grummer, any announcements?
Yes, sir. So the only announcement is in the month of June, we had a staff review of a site plan amendment that came through. That was just a minor amendment to some parking in at 400 Sharkey Drive. It was a parking and drainage that went to ETC for review. And it was a minor one that the mayor approved ordinance in order to review that and get it through. So I just want to make that, make you aware of that. And that's the only announcement that I had.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grummer. We'll move on to approval of the minutes from the May meeting. You've all been provided copies of the minutes in your packets. Do we have any changes or deletions to be made?
Chairman, I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, minutes are approved. I have no public comments on non-agenda items, so I will open the public hearing. Having no old business, we'll move on to new business. And I believe the only item is the replat of lot 235 Country Club of Arkansas. Mr. Grummer, staff comments?
Yes, sir. So actually, all staff comments were accommodated. Let me. One second, let me share my screen. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All righty. So the, we had three items on the checklist. This is a plan that was submitted by Hollow Engineering on a replat in the Country Club of Arkansas area. It is right across from the Mall Mel Boulevard and the commercial area of Town Center. The existing lot, lot 235, exists on a corner and there was land that was owned by the Country Club to the east of it, as well as to the north of it. The Country Club, the lots around the Country Club of Arkansas, Mr. Commissioner Todd had provided information concerning, at the subcommittee, concerning how, when this was developed out, there was ability for some lots to take on additional footage into the golf course. And this is one of those where they've worked with the golf course in order to get their review of the, or the inclusion of the back and the side. So staff comments have been met, the legal was updated, and staff recommends approval contingent upon any comments from commissioners.
All right, any commissioners have any questions of staff? Do any commissioners have any questions or comments directed towards the applicant or the applicant's representative? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we pass this on to the city council with a due pass recommendation.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Todd, this does not go to city council. It's a final plan, so this will stay with the planning commission. So this is.
I recommend we accept this final replat.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes? Those opposed, no? All right, motion is approved. We will move out of old business and move into a discussion item, the North Mall Mill Small Area Plan Draft. Mr. Grummer?
Yes, sir, if you'll bear with me, let me get Mr., I have Dave Roberts with Crafton Toll. He is. Their firm is the one who provided the design for this. So I figured I would let him come in and share a little bit about the actual project itself. So I'll kind of introduce the project and then let Mr. Mr. Roberts come in and share. So give me one moment, let me get my screen back. All right, can you see the screen?
Yes.
All right. So if you recall, back from in the beginning of the year with budget resolutions with city council, they appropriated a small amount of funds to promote small area planning around the city. One of those particularly in North Mall Mel. The, there was an existing alliance of business owners in North Mall Mel that were trying to organize in order to move economic development forward. The chamber had worked with them as part of a business alliance to move that. And the city came, became involved early on last year, and it evolved into the opportunity for this small area plan. It's more of a planning initiative and it's for illustration purposes only to help us kind of identify the vision that the business owners have wanted up there. And from the city standpoint, our interest is street alignments and future development and how it's going to impact 365 as we, as that area moves forward. So this is a good planning document from a beginning stage. Of course, it's illustration only, and this does not necessarily direct the development of properties, but it gives the option of what can happen, as well as help us identify those priority areas that we want to look at for infrastructure improvements, whether it's street alignments, sewer, drainage, and such forth. So I'll let, Dave, can you, can you hear us okay?
I can. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we can. So Dave, I'll kind of let you kind of share a little bit about this plan then.
Okay. Well, the best part about this was that it was driven by the landowners. They had quite a few meetings that we attended before COVID started and by Zoom after. So we talked to just about, I think, everyone in this area that owned land in order to get their input of things that they would like to see happen or would not like to see. So we started with the road layout and then kind of worked around some options. And some of the landowners really had no idea. They just said, hey, let's improve this area. Let's make it where if I want to sell, I can. And so they understood that this is a vision document, just a concept. But what we started with was both the circulation and we had the existing lake, which, as you know, is right behind Lake Liquor and the KSC. So as you look at this plan, 365 is on the bottom of the plan. Obviously, I-40 is on the right and Morgan interchange there. And we even did meet with representatives from the Brown family. So the large area behind the Shell Station and McDonald's came into play. We added two points of connection for them. Next to McDonald's, you see a road that comes out that's part of, it's on their property, their outpost. And then we did develop this roundabout there. It's about the halfway point between the I-40 interchange and Highway 100. It's right about where that slight hill is. And, and our engineers helped me lay out an R dot roundabout. This is the latest R dot approved version. And so obviously, it slows down traffic. It can allow for ingress egress, especially for coming out of the brown property. If that's a distribution center or some kind of industrial use, you'll have vehicles that can enter into that and not have to get up there by the McDonald's to try to make a left. Obviously, a right wouldn't be a problem, but. And from that roundabout, you can see going north, that's Colson Drive. And that would take you to a smaller roundabout on either side of that. Most of those uses would be commercial and/or mixed use. Ashley's own, the two properties on the left side where they both say mixed use, we push those to the front of the property. So you'd have more attractive streetscape sidewalks, so very walkable. In fact, all the white ribbons you see throughout this are walking paths so that this whole area is very accessible and walkable. There's even a small proposed park that kind of nestled into a piece right next to that roundabout. And then the roundabout would then continue to the north and hook over to Tanning Road, which is an existing north-south road that is primarily residential on one side. And as you get further south, larger residential lots. So you do see some apartment complexes or could be condos, likely apartment, and they're helping us transition from the single-family residences off Tanning to some of the more commercial uses that you see near the lake. And so you've got two different sized complexes. One of them is a larger, more of a square right there off of this traffic circle. And that's modeled after apartments that are over near. They're, they're off of Country Club of Arkansas Boulevard, just before you get to the roundabout. So I guess technically, they could be in North Little Rock. And then the narrow, long, narrow ones that are actually off Gold Lane, right there, are sort of modeled after some that are over behind the Catfish Place there in North Little Rock. Or you can get to it from Crystal Hill on the backside. So anyhow, we've got some photos we can show you. Here's a picture of what it could look like around that existing lake. What we did was we thought it'd be great to have entertainment, some shops, restaurants, very walkable, could have some night draws. So this center becomes kind of not only an anchor, but a draw to get people to come here. Of course, economic development was on our mind as we were laying a lot of this out. With that existing lake, you could obviously have some spray rings, outdoor seating. And then at the far end of it, I showed an amphitheater that's tied into the walking trail system. Here's a shot that could be at night. And this is a development that's down in Texas that we picked as a good example. And then the next image, I believe, is the mixed use that we showed Ashley. Oh, no, this is the, and I'll show you this back on the plan, but this is the, the dinner theater like you have down by Bass Pro Shop. And that, we located on that north side, right there on the curve of the interstate. Again, this could be anything that landowner may choose to do something else. What we wanted to show all of these landowners is what would fit, what could be appropriate, and how it would connect to its context so that this could generate what we're calling an entertainment district in this area where folks could easily get off the interstate, come into that off of either Frontier Road or Colson Drive, and come back into this development and enjoy all the amenities. Of course, if it were annexed into the city, all this would increase the tax base as well. So there'd be the benefits from the development. So that is one of those movie theater like down at Bass Pro Shops now, outlet down south. And that last image would be a mixed use. You might have retail on the bottom floor, maybe a restaurant on the end. The upper floor could be office or depending on how you want to do it, it could even be zone residential. And that would be that Ashley piece that we had shown there with the break in the middle so that folks could walk right across the street and either shop in those shops or go to the amphitheater or whatnot. So the parking that you see scattered throughout, we tried to avoid the giant sea of parking. Now, the theater does have that. But the vehicle circulation flows through pretty well. Like I mentioned, there's great connectivity for the pedestrian circulation and some of the lots like that you see down closer to Lake Liquor, right about where that dot is, you've got a parking lot there that takes up a lot right behind the commercial use on 365. And so there will need to be some parking, both for the amphitheater and for the entertainment shops and restaurants on the lake. And then we do have some ancillary buildings there by the amphitheater that could be the green room or storage for any stage equipment as, and also maybe a public restroom. And then you see some buildings there closest to the interstate that don't have any green around them. They're just kind of dropped on the aerial. Those are just showing, currently, there's no buildings on those lots. That just shows what either office or small commercial or even restaurant could fit on those. And again, we worked with all these different landowners. And they're aware that none of this has to happen. It's just a vision to try to move this forward. If they want it to happen, the city wants it to happen. This allows you to calculate how much road network you'd have. Like Scott mentioned, what kind of sewer line need, what the volume would be for your water in your sewer now that you have some square footages that you can calculate. And I failed to mention down on the roundabout, you've got commercial showing on all three sides of that. And they could be anything from a bank branch on the west side, right there on the left, to maybe a small pharmacy or something there on the right. And across the street, that smaller one could be another type of, can put small, not convenience, but more like a, a, a bank or a small commercial building as well. So really, that's it in a nutshell. Scott, is there anything that I left out? Oh, I did leave one thing, I'm sorry. The mini storage. We located mini storage up along the interstate. Rocky Havens currently owns that, and it's a really narrow, difficult location because access is only off of Tanning. It does kind of hug the fence line, but luckily, there's a pretty good buffer of existing trees in the I-40 right away. So, you know, storage may not be the prettiest use. I think you could screen that, but for that narrow of a site, it's, it's the best thing that I could find to really fit well on that location.
So, thank you, Dave. Thank you very much. That was really good. And, and I'll just reiterate that, as Dave said, this was a collaboration between the business owners, the landowners in North Mall Mel. Everything that you see illustrated on here, the property owners were involved in this. It also included the Chamber of Commerce and our Economic Development Division here at Mall Mel with Judy Keller. The mayor was involved, and this was a collaborative process. And it was, again, for the purpose, from a planning perspective, is helping us identify now that everybody has come to a consensus from a land ownership and what that potential vision could be. The next thing would be is determining what are some of the low hanging fruit that we need to look at? They've mentioned, what is the capacity for sewer? What, what does that look like? Well, this gives us the ability to potentially calculate that, as well as locating those lines where those right-of-way easements would be to, to bring those. And the other thing is, what are the possible public improvements? Whether it's park space around a lake or whether if it's road or street improvements to improve ingress and egress into the area. So those are certainly things that we'll look at. Again, they're long, they're, some can be short-term, some can be long-term, but it's all strategy intended so that we can take the next step and start really implementing some, some change in that area. So with that, I'll allow any comments.
Any commissioner questions or comments of the staff or the representative from Crafton Toll?
Yeah, a question, you had indicated that there was a meeting with the property owners. Is that all the property owners or were there some that didn't attend? Were there some objections? Dissent?
So, so there, there are several other property owners in the area that, that were not as much involved. Their properties were not impacted by this. Every illustration on here, each property owner was involved. So, as well as some that are not illustrated on here, such as the Browns that own all the property to the south, Colson Oil, who owns the Shell Station and the McDonald's lot. So we did involve. And the next step will be to broaden that involvement and take this and, and get the input from a broader reach. So again, we kept it to a smaller collective only because there were some disagreements between what some wanted and others wanted. So the, the intent was to try to keep, to get that vision channeled together and get everybody going in the same direction, which is where we're at now, which is a good thing.
Along that same line, was there any discussion of annexation at those meetings?
So we did not prioritize annexation as one of the items only because there was past, some of the past activity that happened with the annexation of that area with some things that weren't necessarily met, that some of the business owners felt was dropped. What we tried to do is make it more collaborative so that those that are in the county, and this does involve both county and city land right now. Everybody is aware that annexation is, is on the table as far as discussion if the city is to invest in the area that may be county-related. But right now, we're trying not to prioritize it because it's kind of a sensitive issue. So the, the main goal here is to create, gain consensus and, and every one working together.
Yeah, because if my understanding is correct, along that line, the city couldn't do any infrastructure planning unless it is part of the city.
That is correct. And our hopes are that now with this, this planning document gives us the tool that we can start looking at potential grants in the area. We're looking at grants in other parts of the city that we can get from the state, as well as the federal government. So having this will help us do that. And if we can bring a strategy in of potential financing and infrastructure or improvements, then we can start to have those conversations. But I'm, we're kind of taking baby steps, but those conversations will begin, I'm sure, in the future.
I like it. Keep my fingers crossed that it moves forward.
Well, I commend Crafton Toll. I think they've done a great job. They captured, again, a lot of this was already designed out by the Ashley family. There were some slight modifications in alignment so that we could see alignments with, from the north to the south part of 365. But for the most part, a lot of this work was already done by the business owners up there. So what we tried to do was take their vision and kind of refine it and to where everybody could come together on it. And we have that consensus and it's, it's exciting. So we're looking forward to moving forward.
All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. We will move on to liaison reports for the city council meeting of July 6th, Commissioner Todd.
Yeah, I attended virtually. And there were a couple of items that involved planning commission ordinance 1008, which is amended 94-9 of the Mall Mel City Code, which actually allowed the mayor to bring submissions to the planning commission instead of the back and forth that was required previously. And I think the reason why the mayor wasn't included in this ordinance was that in 86, when these were written, we had a city manager form of government and the actual mayor changed yearly. The Board of Directors would pick one member to be the mayor for that year and hold the meetings. The other item was ordinance 1009, amending the zoning map. And, and that was that down zone from the area out to White Oak Crossing and the Ball Field from C3 to C2. One other little interesting item was in mayor's comments, they went from talking about the, the mask ordinance to a resolution, pretty much had kind of been prepared, but they, the city council, the city attorney and the mayor on the spot pretty much accepted the government's recommendation for the use of masks in the state of Arkansas. So they moved forward really quickly, which city, well, all governments don't often do. But they, they moved forward and we now have a, a template on when and how and how to enforce mask. And that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Todd. July 20th, Commissioner Johnson?
Sure. Followed what, what John had said on the, the, the third reading of, of the code, allowed the mayor to address some, some council business or some commission business that passed. And then the, the rezone was on the third reading too, and it passed as well. There wasn't any other planning commission business.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Council liaisons for August, August 3rd is Commissioner Green, and August 17th is Commissioner Smith. Any commissioners have anything else that needs to be discussed?
Scott?
So. Yes, sir. So Chair, do you feel, so next month, as far as meeting, city council is planning on meeting in the city council chambers, kind of as a test model. I believe one commissioner is not going to be in attendance. He's going to attend remotely. But I figured the, it would maybe pose the question to the commissioners whether if you still want to meet virtually next month, or if you'd like to try the council chambers out.
That's, I'll open it up to other suggestions, but my inclination is to follow the lead of the city council. And unless the August 3rd meeting is just a disaster, I suggest we follow suit.
Yeah, I'm with that. And, and one council member has some issues. So Scott will have the opportunity to set up a modified Zoom slash in-person meeting. Zoom slash in-person meeting. And. I think we are correct.
Scott, does the, does the AV there in City Hall have the ability to remote, remote broadcast?
Yes, sir, it does.
And you can do that live?
We can, we can do that. The City Council does it through Facebook. What, what we can look at maybe is set up a YouTube broadcast and try that, or we can set up a possible Facebook, so I can look at that as well.
Sounds good. Any other commissioners like to weigh in? Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes? Those opposed, no? We're adjourned. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, commissioners.